Anytime.
Good afternoon, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. We respectfully acknowledge that the County of Halliburton is located on Treaty 20 Mishisagi territory, and in the traditional territory of the Mishisagi and Chipewa nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations, which are Curve Lake, Rama, Hiawatha, Alderville, Skugog Island, Bozurle, and Georgina Island First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area, and we recognize its original indigenous inhabitants as the stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. May I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda, please? Lisa and I'm just need to shift my screen because I can no longer see the room, afraid. Would someone in the room kindly say something so that the screen goes back?
Adele has put her.
Perfect. Great. I can see you now. Great. Okay, so moved by Lisa, seconded by Adele. Be it resolved that the Halliburton County Library Board adopts the agenda for the September 11, 2024 regular meeting. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. So are there any declarations of pecuniary interest this afternoon? Seeing none? Could I have a mover and a seconder to accept the consent agenda, so long as everyone is happy with it and doesn't want to pull anything for discussion? All well? May I have a mover and a seconder then, please? Paul and Walt. Be it resolved that the Halliburton County Library Board accepts the consent agenda for the September 11, 2024 regular meeting as presented. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you all. So we are going to financial reports. Andrea, did you want to talk us through the financial report that you kindly prepared?
So just a few items to mention. So we have, as we were just chatting about received the furniture indoor set. So a lot of it arrived on August 23rd and the remainder of it arrived on Monday. So we do have the invoicing for that in our email to process that. So that is not reflected as being spent, but it will be paid in the next little bit. So that will show up soon. So that's the only kind of thing that I wanted to highlight. We are a little bit behind on our invoicing because we have been short-staffed in the office. So there are some things like for eBooks, for example, Tessa has been ordering lots of eBooks. So there are things that are in process, but that are not showing up here as being spent just yet. So those are the only highlights that I want to mention. Any questions? Jackie?
I'm looking at the revenue and the federal and provincial funding. Does this indicate that it hasn't actually happened yet?
That's correct. So federal funding, we did not have capacity to hire summer students this year. So we did initially proceed with an application for funding students and just with our, all of our changing staff, we didn't have capacity to hire and train supervised staff. So that is a, it's essentially neutral because we didn't get the money. So that's why that's showing as zero. And the provincial funding, last year we received it just a day or two before January 1st. So we don't, we have received $120,000. We expect to receive it again. It has not increased in many, 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 many years. But we do expect to get that. There's an application that we need to fill out. There's some, we've submitted our annual statistics as a process that we go through every year where we send a huge range of statistics. We measure things across a week. So that's all been submitted and so we expect to see that probably in late December that will show. The other thing, the tax requisition, it seems like rather than depositing the whole amount at the start of the year, they've just deposited a part of it, so.
Any other questions or comments? Looking good. All right, in that case, easy done. Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive the financial report? Lisa and Adele. Thank you all. Be it resolved that the Halliburton County Library Board accepts the financial report as presented. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. So no business arising from the minutes. So on to new business and the Dorset branch, the book cart and the slot wall sign holders. Would you like to walk us through that one?
So I'm delighted. Thanks, many thanks to Algonquin Highlands for purchasing the outdoor book drop. So you remember, we talked about that at our June meeting. The outdoor book drop has been purchased by Algonquin Highlands and has been received. It does mean now that it's an outdoor book drop and we're in the basement, that we do need to have staff transport incoming materials that are left in the book drop down to the lower level. And so we need in order to safely do that and to move items around in, inside the library, we do need a book truck or a cart. The other thing that you will have seen when you did your tour, there are two between some of the windows. There are two slat walls. So does everyone know what I mean? Slat wall goes down the wall, you can put things on it. We do need some acrylic sign holders in order to be able to attach things up there. We do have a couple that we are going to take from the Wobba Forest branch that aren't really being used there. But we do need to purchase some additional acrylic pieces to put on so that we can put up displays and that type of thing up. So these are items that we hadn't included originally in our, we put together really quickly back in, back in December are kind of what we would need for door set. So we are asking to take $1,000 from our reserve funds to purchase the book truck and those acrylic sign holders.
Would you not have room in your normal supplies budget for this year to use some of that money?
We likely do not. No, because we still have lots of ink.
And Andrea, with the book cart, does it, is it, does it work so that it goes on that machine that takes wheelchairs down the stairs and it fits and you've got keys for that and all that? That all works?
Yeah, and it will be staff's judgment. You know, if they look and it's only three books in the, you know, in the book drop if they want to carry it, but when there's, if there's more substantial amount, we don't want staff to have to go up and down, up and down the stairs. And even within the branch, it's safer and better for repetitive strain injuries. Yes, there's a book cart and you can be wheeled around.
It's also hard to call yourself a librarian unless you have a book cart to push around. I mean, we've already taken away the little card system. I mean, you can't, you can't take away the book cart too. People go through these identity crises, I think. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Paul?
Paul, yeah.
I just wanted to thank you for following up with your township on the Dropbox. I remember we had the discussion last time and you offered to pursue the funding for that. So thanks for looking after that.
Oh, you're welcome. And thanks to Algonquin Highlands Council for saying yes. Yeah, thanks, Paul. That's great. Any other questions? Okay, in that case, I have a motion to approve the use of $1,000 from reserves to purchase the book cart and the slat wall sign holders. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Jackie? Seconded by Lisa. Be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board approves the use of up to $1,000 from reserves to purchase a book cart and slat wall sign holders for the Dorset branch. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. All right, the 2025 budget discussion. It feels like we were just here, honestly. It really, really does.
Yes.
Do you want to walk us through that, Andrea, please?
Okay, so in your agenda package, you will see a very, very preliminary. It's not even a draft at this point yet. It's, some numbers have been added and there needs to be lots of changes made. I have put this on the agenda, not because we're obviously ready to approve the budget that goes forward, but because I'd like to get feedback from the library board at this stage as we prepare the budget about what the expectations are for the library board. Just like to set the stage by reminding you that last year at this time, we had seven people on the library's administrative team. Six of them were full-time and one was a part-time staff member. And then in the 2024 budget process, I was asked to find $115,000 in reductions from the library budget. You can see in the county librarians' report that we've had a very, very, very busy summer. And we've tried really hard to make these reductions invisible to members of the public. We've worked really, really hard to make that happen. But we've been operating with three people who are all in this room, three full-time staff members and one part-time staff member doing a job that was formerly full-time. And then in addition to that, Hillary and I each take one unpaid day off per pay period. So we do have a systems and technology coordinator and a communications coordinator hired. The full-time systems coordinator person will be starting on the 24th. So we're very, very excited to have him join the team. So he will be replacing Erin in a full-time position. And communications coordinator will be starting on October 8th. And that's the person who will be sort of replacing Tessa, who has moved to a different role in the library. So I just want you to be really aware of that, how hard we've been working. And for anyone who is watching, we're doing a lot. We're working really hard. And yeah, so we've done what the board requested in terms of funding those reductions. We are opening an eighth branch, which we're super excited about. But I do want to be really honest with you as we enter this budget process that if we are asked to make any further reductions, it will be a reduction in service hours for branch closures. There's, we're stressed and working flat out really, really, really hard. And so I just want to be really upfront and honest with everyone about that.
Before, before you go on, Andrea, I think I can say on behalf of the board, how, and on behalf of county council, how grateful we are that you have masterfully taken us through this process in your, in your very first weeks and months on the job. It's, it's no small thing. It was trial by fire. And you, as an individual and as a leader, have really done everyone extremely proud. And we are all very, very grateful for that commitment and fine attention to detail. And certainly to all of your colleagues, how grateful we are that you've, you know, you've, you've taken this challenge on with a smile and you're doing a fabulous job. So thank you, thank you to all of you. This is.
For saying that, I just would like to acknowledge that it's a true team effort. I'm the one that speaks the most during these meetings from the team. But without Hillary and Tessa and Shauna and our whole team, it would not be possible. We're incredibly, incredibly lucky to have a passionate team of people who care about their community and are just working so, so hard to make it all happen. So I wanted to be really upfront and honest with you about that. So I have started entering numbers into the software that's called Questa Cow, which is what the county uses for the, for all budgeting things. And so that's the report that I did share with you. As I said, there are lots of tweaks to be made. What I'm hoping to get from the board at this meeting is a sense of, you know, are we looking to make further reductions? Are we, you know, putting some of the money back? Are we, I guess, what should we expect during this budget process so that we can, as we go through, make decisions about what should include and what not to include? There are some things in here which we did take out. So the, we did have some money in previous budgets for board fees per diems, which we did remove to cut costs in 2024. I do think it would be useful for the board to do another tour around of the branches in 2025. I think that would be useful to have, to everyone see the branches, kind of where they're at right now. I think those who joined last time were, sounded a useful experience. And so that would probably require lunch and mileage and that sort of thing. As well, I don't know whether any board members are interested in attending the Ontario Library Association Super Conference, either virtually or in person. It, they do have a separate special day that is focused for board members. So you could attend the whole conference or just the board specific part. So if that is something of interest to any of you, that we need to factor that into the budget as well. Some of the numbers have come in and some haven't with respect to how much our subscriptions will be costing. We have some information that Shauna got literally just before I came over here about the ACF film license. So that's something that we did discuss when we were looking at where to reduce costs in June. And we did decide to keep that in. But she received some information back just today that those costs, depending on which options we choose, may be more expensive. So, so there are a few things like that, that, that we could discuss today. But in general, what I'm hoping to leave here with today is a sense of, you know, whether I need to spend the next few weeks trying to, you know, figure out how to change our staffing model, whether to add things back in. So I'm looking from, to the board for direction on next steps.
My question is about the reserves. So since we were, we made up the shortfall for this year with reserves, so that we're using that as part of the operating budget. We just sort of pushed off that problem to next year, right? So.
Well, it would, so we have had a reduction and the reduction, because we have fewer positions, we cut the administrative support coordinator full-time role. We've cut the benefits, made a full-time job with benefits, a part-time job. We've reduced the salaries of Hillary and myself. And so those are, those will be reductions in 25. So that, it's not, those will be reductions moving forward.
So we, we have to make up that, what is it, $120,000 or something, right?
Well, we need, I think we need direction from our county council members about what the expectations are for this year, like what, what we need to target, I guess.
Why don't you tell us what this year's budget is about then? Are you asking, I was trying to figure out, are you asking for more than last year? And where, you know? Like what, what are you asking for this year?
I guess I'm asking for clarity initially upfront about the process, rather than having to do multiple iterations and change things midway through the year. Like I, rather than me say, this is what I want, I'm hoping that you'll say, okay, this is what we're looking at in terms of.
Right.
An amount.
I guess, given, given that you, that we've approved this staffing model and that those positions would be filled, that the, the big number on these budgets is the wages. And that is based on the staffing model that we've all approved.
Yes.
Really, and that's, that's the majority of your, that's really the majority of the budget. Yeah, so it seems to me that all the, all the small potatoes are not as important as having a discussion about the cost of your staffing model.
Yes.
And that's obviously in the, in this budget now that you're.
So we have given information to the finance department. We have just recently hired a batch of new people. So that's going to end, like it's going to change. The hourly rates will be different from newer staff and your older staff. So there's some, there's fine tuning to do in terms of the figure that's on. This is not a reasonable budget. This is just, I'd like, let's start talking about this. I am getting information from new documents.
Right.
No, sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Fine, please.
Um, just thinking off the top of my head, it strikes me that, you know, as Adele says, we approved the staffing model. County council was happy with how that created a savings within the budget. And we approved a number of sustainable changes. And then we approved a number of one-off changes such as, if I'm not mistaken, we didn't spend our usual amount on book purchases because we knew we had the Dorset large purchase coming in. So we were able to save that, but county council knew that was just a one-time only deal. So it, it rather strikes me that we would not be seeking a reduction at all, that the staffing model would remain the same unless you have any changes to suggest, Andrea, at this time, which I doubt, but you might. And that any one-time only reduction that we made last year be simply put back into the budget, which means that it will increase. So there would be a reserve, a transfer to reserves. Our, our book purchase would return to the, the usual amount or whatever amount is appropriate, given inflation, et cetera. And, and that we take that to county council almost as expected, because we were clear and you were very clear with what was sustainable and what was not sustainable moving ahead. Do other people agree with that or is that shortsighted?
No, well, from where I'm coming from, if we've approved the expenditures based on the staffing model, I don't know. I can't see how we would then want to surprise Andrea with any requests later on. We've said what we want.
Yep.
Based on what she suggested is needed. So I don't know how much the board can nickel and dime her once we've already told her what, what we, what we think is right. For, to be able to deliver the library service.
Lisa?
So I've, I've looked at what was provided by Andrea. So I'm just wondering then for the, the general public and just to put it out there, what is the percentage of the increase slash decrease that the library is looking for for 2025?
Well, I'm not sure the percentage, I'm not sure the percentage increase or decrease. So we did, let's find something here. We did.
That's the thing that county council is going to ask. They're not going to ask how you're getting about it or whatever. They're going to want to know what that number is. And I think that's probably more important than how you get there. If that makes sense. Am I right, Ken or Walt? Are you seeing what I'm, do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes. I, I mean, I'm not trying to sound doom and gloom here, but and I'm, I, I think we're, that, like, needless to say, we're at the preliminary stages of starting to talk about your, your budget. But I, I know that our county, the county, and I know what, I know what Darsart, Daisart has coming down the pipes. And we've got a lot of expenditure, expenses coming up that are, like Murray and I were talking today, what our budget's going to be this year. Like, we're really, we're really worried that there's a lot of, some, some big things which I can't talk about right now, needless to say. But I, I, I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm not trying to sound doom and gloom, but I think, you know, present something that you think is reasonable and present it to us at the county, right, Jen and Lisa? Needless to say, we'll, if we have to critique it, it'll be critiqued at the county.
Yeah, Andrea.
That makes sense, Lisa?
Yeah, like that's, I, yes, I just think that it's just a number, I guess, just if, like, when, when a, when all the departments bring their, bring their budgets forward to the budget time each year, they'll say, okay, so for, you know, the finance department, we're looking at a 5% increase or a 2% decrease or whatever. And I don't think that necessarily county council needs to get into the weeds of things, provided that percentage falls in line with kind of what everybody was expecting or assuming it would be. So if there's a percentage number that can be presented to county council, I don't think we need to necessarily tell you how to run the department, provided it falls within that range of acceptance of most of county council.
Andrea, you had your hand up, I think.
I just was gonna mention that I have been invited to present to county council at the October 23rd council meeting. And so ideally in terms of process, today I leave with some information from the board about, sort of about what that percentage is. And then I can take it away and say, okay, this is what it would look like. And then I come back on to our October library board meeting, which is before the county council meeting. We discuss based on, you know, a budget. So I don't take it away and redo it and take it away and redo it. Then we can decide, and you can approve the budget that then goes forward to county council. So I guess what I'm seeking from you is some guidance about, yeah, about that percentage increase, I guess.
Adele?
I think perhaps it's not the board that should be telling you what percentage increase, because last year, the board, which included county council, said, this is a good budget, submit it. And then we were surprised when county council, which included, which included the, the councillors at this table, said, no, that's not good enough, and sent it back and said, cut. So it would be probably more expeditious if county council could say, this is all we're going to put up with as an increase and we won't surprise you later. Then at least we on the board know what's going to be, what's going to happen. I mean, why, why would we say, Andrea, based on your service model, 10% is fair? And then it goes to county council and county council says, no, we're only going to let you have five. Then, then the work the board has done studying the budget and saying to Andrea, yes, this looks fair, is all for naught.
Yeah.
If funders are only going to give us 5% more, then why can't you tell us now?
I, I think it's a bit of a chicken and egg thing. I know that at some lower tiers, a, a number percentage, a, a percentage increase across the board is stated upfront and all departments have to try to work towards it. And, and I guess in other lower tiers, it isn't that departments will present what they believe they fundamentally need. And then everything is looked at individually. Lisa, you've got the most experience on county council in the last number of years. What do you, what is the mechanism typically? I guess with, with our new C A O, it'll, it's yet to be seen what the tradition is going to be.
Yeah, it, it might be different. And plus there's, Andrea is the, I've had two treasurers as well at the county level. But it would be my, I mean, I'm more thinking back to, I know in Minden Hills, how we would do things is that staff would bring to us what their, you know, wish list was. And then council would decide whether or not, you know, that, that percentage is accepted.
Yeah, so I, I, I hear what you're asking, Andrea. I don't think we certainly at this stage, those of us on county council. Those of us on county council present today can give you a, a number because it. It, it hasn't been established if it is even going to be established. I do understand your hesitation. To engage in too many back and forths, and we are absolutely one hundred percent. On board with you with that, we don't want that to happen either, but I think. Most prudent would be, you know, what is your reasonable estimate of status quo costs? Without expecting you for a cent decrease. Understanding that there is likely going to be an increase based at least on, on wage changes and inflation. Um, and see where we land with that, um, if there are things that you want to propose. Um, that we, that we either. Bring back that we said we would sustainably keep off or entirely new things, then, you know. Let's have a conversation at, at, at board about it, absolutely, I don't think. I, I don't think there's any reason to. As Adele says, to nickel and dime those things. I, I think we should have a fulsome conversation about them and then pre- present what, what we believe is right at county council, yes, Lisa.
And, and just so that the board understands, uh, there's, there's back and forth with every department. Because one department may come forward and say they need X amount of dollars, and this is what the percentage is. But then another department comes and we go, oh, we didn't realize, oh, we have to do that road, so then. You know, it may have to come from a different department to, to bring the balance into that percentage that county council is willing. To take on, and also I don't think that it's fair that only three members of county council sit here. And could tell you what our expectation is, because our expectation might be completely different than the other five members of county council. So I, I, I think it would be wisest to have you tell us, Andrea, what exactly it is you think you need slash want. What that percentage looks like, looks like on your budget, and then that's what would come before county council and. Hopefully it could be accepted as is, but if there's something, a larger increase in another. Area of the county that, you know, we, we can't make it happen, then unfortunately it does go back and forth, and that, it's like. It's like juggling all the time, right?
Um, I'm assuming Andrea's got her hand up, I'm afraid my screen doesn't.
So, uh, so, uh, if I repeat back to you can, uh, confirm, so, um. The direction I'm getting today is to using the staffing model that was proposed and implemented in June. Um, keeping in mind the uh, standard wage increases. Uh, and keeping the status quo. Services, so that was also obviously a question that I was hoping to answer before I put together the budget is. Like, if there's an expectation that we need to cut further, then. That's a, yeah, a huge amount of work if I need to look at cutting service hours, so. What I'm hearing from you then is that we're not closing or reducing any branches. Uh, at this point in terms of hours, we're keeping the status quo staffing model.
What I can say is that at county council, there has been not a hint or a whiff of any request of that nature. So that is different from the Halliburton um, county library board, so. Absolutely, it would be good to hear from the other board members if they, for entirely different reasons, want to change service. Times or whatever it might be, but, but as of yet, there is not a whiff of budget from um, uh, from county council.
Thank you.
Do, does anyone on the board wish to raise? Uh, ideas or questions along those lines from a board perspective? Adele.
What I see on, on the numbers so far is that I don't see much movement at all in terms of increasing any of the expenses. And that if there are, if there are way, if there is more money on the wage line, I'm going to assume that it's only because of. Inflation and, and natural movements along the salary grid, uh, because we're not, we don't have more people in the buildings.
No, we've reduced the staffing hours, yeah.
Yeah, and if there is more, if there is more salaries predicted, well, we have, we do have to remember that we are opening one. One more branch, and that's another twelve hours a week.
Fourteen hours.
Fourteen hours a week, so. Um, so I, I, I do think that we all have to remember that little nugget.
Yeah.
The salaries line, because that will, that will cost money, and that was something that. That the entire board felt we should do was to open that branch.
Um, and, uh, does any member of the board or staff wish to propose something to Andrea? That you think we should be adding this year, acknowledging that county council hasn't yet spoken on, on its budgetary. I- interests or concerns, but is there anything that members of the board would like to see added that isn't on, on this list? Okay, Paul, you had your hand up, didn't you? Sorry.
Uh, no, I just wanted to say that I concur with Adele's comments and that, like. If you look through the line-by-line entries, there isn't anything that's changed significantly or, or changed from the previous year. Um, after the reductions were made, except for perhaps a salary, but there's a couple zeros in there. And, and, and I'm not, we're not sure if it's a vacation or is that holidays that are entered into that lump sum nine twenty-two. Uh, so it's a bit higher than the previous year, so there's a bit of question there, but the bottom line, it looks modest. And in line with last year, and it doesn't appear that you could take anything else away without. A substantial reduction in service to the taxpayer, so. I think, I'm content.
Okay, and you know, I, I would very much like to believe, I can't speak for, for all members of county council, but I'd very much like to believe that. The memory will be sincere, that last year some considerable cuts were made, uh, and it, um. It shall not be soon forgotten, I, I, I can't honestly say anything more than that, but. Uh, yeah, um, Andrea, is there anything on this budget that you really wish you could see that you didn't put in?
Um, was, as I said, this is not a finalized, this is a very much a document, so we have to go through with a more fine tooth comb and. Um, and make adjustments, I, I mentioned uh, earlier, literally just before I walked in here. There was, Shauna received an information about the film license, so there are, um. So this is the licensing that allows us to have the published performance rights to uh, show popular movies, which we often schedule on. Professional activity days, for example, um, and, and so there's different licensing requirements. We were hoping to get a, a package that would enable us to screen more films next year. Um, but the information she got back, uh, said that it was significantly more than what we were hoping for. Like three thousand dollars, um, rather than sixteen fifty, so I think that is something that, um. Families in our community really like, um, not, not, we have a movie theater locally. And it does provide a chance for families to have something to do on those days that doesn't cost anything. Um, so that would be one, one thing that, um, would, would increase.
Um, and I see under transfer to reserves, the budget is at zero. I, I would suggest, unless I've misunderstood, that we resume our transfer to reserves. I don't think anyone at county would misunderstand the need to, to continue to add to our reserves.
They've reduced this year was our normal six thousand dollars, be- because we put that money away each year. For when we have to make the larger purchases for I T equipment, so we're in twenty twenty-five. It is a year where we need to use those, um. Both the photocopiers in, um, Minden and Daisart, the public, big public printer ones. Are at their end of their, their life cycle, so, yeah, so we do, um.
I see.
So it really, I can't emphasize enough, it's just a, like a, a first version, not everything's in and.
And then the, the, the traditional book purchase budget, did that get ba- back in? I, I, I struggle to see exactly where it is on the budget.
Uh, um, in, in twenty twenty-three, the book budget was sixty-eight thousand dollars. We did reduce it as part of our reduction in costs in twenty twenty-four to sixty-five thousand dollars. Because we knew that we have, uh, twenty thousand dollars to purchase things for Dorset from our reserve, so. Um, that, that's an example of, um, you know, we could go back to the sixty-eight thousand dollars in. Uh, that was sort of the, the regular amount previous to that, and that doesn't take into consideration inflation though. And it would also need to have a corresponding increase in our, um, in the line that's for, um. Cataloging and processing, and because there's many more books to. Um, process that, that line also goes up.
Um, was, sorry, what line is it?
Uh, second line from the bottom on page three.
Ah, there it is, yeah, I see.
Yeah, so that's the, the book line, and then the, um. Bibliographic services is on page two, kind of midway down.
Okay. Okay, yeah, no, I'm with you now. With you now, okay. Is that, um, does that seem fairly? Clear in terms of in, direction goes from the board, or do you, or does anyone else have anything further to say on, on any of that? Yes, please, Jackie.
I do, and I'm, I'm sure this is, I know this is highly controversial, but when I look at circulation figures. And I see that there's one of our branches that has like six hundred items a year. It, it has to raise the question as to whether we should be spending money on providing. Those, that service, like, like allocating our precious staffing hours. To a branch that consistently has low circulation. Now, I know that we can't make any, this is not something that can be decided quickly. And especially since we're opening the new branch and we have no idea what circulation's gonna look like for that branch, so we have to go. You know, through a cycle to see, see what that's looking like, but I don't think that we can continue in the long term. Um, trying to provide. Um, service in so many locations without having any increase in, in staffing hours.
Um, I'd love to speak to that, sure, um, the one thing I've learned since actually. Being in the libraries so much is that circulation is only part of the measure of the activity of a branch. And that what I think would be a more, um. Realistic measurement that has never really been presented to the board is bodies through the door. Um, because the libraries are so much more than a place to borrow books.
Yeah, I understand, but we need to use some measure.
Exactly, so maybe we're looking at the, maybe we're looking at the wrong measure. Um, because, um, because we're asked in a lot of our libraries these days, um. Um, they're, they're, well, we've been through this conversation where there's some, they're almost social service agencies. In terms of the training we require the staff to, to meet the challenges, so. Uh, maybe, um, I've, I've wondered, looking at those circulation statistics each month. If there should be other numbers that are presented to the board, I mean, we do have to quantify the value of each branch. But is that quantification realistic to only use circulation?
No, good point, yeah.
Yeah, Andrea.
Um, so we do, uh, have walk-in statistics, and it's, um, been on our to-do list for. A long time to develop a better process for, um, gathering and presenting those statistics to you. It, um, it is something that we do think is important, um, and so. Ideally in the future, that is something that we would incorporate into our reporting to you. Um, it does take a lot of time to do, and, um. But it is, yeah, something that is on our list of.
Just, but, do, do, when you're referring to the, the, uh, branch with the lowest circulation. I've just opened it up again, and twenty twenty-four, uh, to date, Dorset has the lowest. But it is, it is lockers, and, and I imagine that there's not a ton of people who. Get up on a Saturday morning eager to jump to their locker to see what's there, like, that. I think that it's pretty natural that there would be lower circulation for lockers.
I wasn't looking at that at all, I was, I was counting Dorset because it's not, hasn't been a fully operating branch.
Okay. So you're looking at, at Highland Grove, is that, or at Goodrum, I should say?
Uh, yeah, I guess that's the one, um, yeah, it is seven hundred, I, I, I exaggerated, but, um. Yeah.
Okay, just, just so that I, I was clear, the, we weren't confusing.
Yeah, 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 okay, I'm looking at twenty twenty-three. Um, the goal for Goodrum was the six twenty-four.
Four, yeah, okay. Um, Paul, yeah.
Yes, a, a comment on the, the gathering of numbers, um. Whether it's circulation, people in New York, but I think the other really insightful kind of, uh. Numbers to gather would be the number of people that are actually using the computer service in the building with. Uh, library equipment or, and or, I think, and, um. Sense of internet service, whether it's in the building or outside, if there's some way that the I T people can collect. Uh, the number of times a user logs in or accepts the consent. Use of internet service. That would be really insightful as to the value and utility or frequency of usage at a branch. So you could add that to the list.
Yeah, Andrea.
Um, yes, absolutely, and, but there are other things that are difficult to quantify, um. That wouldn't necessarily show up on a stat sheet, so we know that, um. Point in time has organized school readiness programs in Highlands East specifically because they're. Really worried about how children, um, in more rural parts of our community are doing when they're getting into school. We know that there are a few families who regularly do use the Goodrum. Uh, branch to bring home picture books and to do, you know, if you look through the county librarians report, you can see them doing. Fun free crafts in the summer, um, for families who don't have money to spare, um. Being able to access those kind of materials, computer, we brought the iPads out to Highlands East branches. In the summertime, we brought out games, um, we know a lot of families use food banks, our, it's. Food bank uses increasing, uh, in everywhere in Ontario, but in our community. Um, you know, people are getting firewood, uh, you know, there are really a lot of families struggling, especially. Uh, I live in that part of the area, so, um, the numbers, circulation numbers are low, but there are. Um, other outcomes that are happening that aren't tracked, but there's a book club that happens there. Um, and it's only a handful of members, um, but you know, it's an opportunity for communities to meet, and for public space, so. Um. So yes, it's very low.
I'm not, I'm not disputing the value of those things, but, but when we're talking about service and money. You know, it's gotta, you, you can't, you know, you'd be the first to say, you can't provide all that service for this amount of money.
Yeah.
So it's, it's just something that we can't, we can't just keep assuming that we can. It's the same.
Yeah, no, that's a really fair and brave point. Yeah, absolutely. Um. Uh, are you suggesting that that is something? To take into consider for this budget, or is that something that you want to explore over the course of the year, perhaps?
I think it's something we should be exploring, and I'd say a year from now. Or maybe even longer than that, because we need, we need to have a full Dorset. You know, twelve months before we really have a sense of. How that's going, what that's gonna look like, and, um. And um maybe there'll be demand for more hours. Maybe we think we need to put more, more hours up there or in one of the other branches, which, which then has has impact on uh you know, how much uh many service hours we we actually can afford to fund. So so, yeah, so I think it's something that we should pay um more attention to how we can measure usage apart from circulation. I think that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I don't think that, I don't think it's possible to have a real um conversation using only circulation.
No, I I I agree. That's, that's, it just jumped out at me because it's, it's just so strikingly much lower than the other branches that, that it just, I just thought, okay, we can't keep not talking about it.
No, that's right. And I often wonder if if that's the kind of report we should be even receiving since it's so it it's so, since it's not really a true reflection of of what's happening in the branches, like, um, but it's a standard report in the library and, you know, in the library world. Yeah. From when that, from when that was all that happened in libraries, really. Yeah, yeah.
So Andrea, would you be amenable to at the the next reasonable board meeting? Cause I know we're, you know, we're entering into budget and everything else, but could we table those two questions? One being how we best measure on and portray library services here in, in Halliburton Highlands. Um, and also, um the, the question about, you know, about branches. Uh, could, could we maybe even, just starting with the first one? Um, could we ta- make sure that's tabled at the appropriate meeting in the, in the, you know, the next six months? Yeah. And we'll just, we'll keep um we'll keep being deliberate about talking about it. Yes, Paul?
Does that require a motion so that there's a thing forward on it, a ticker or a flag on it, or is it just something that goes into Andrea's workbook?
I guess if the board feels that you would like it to be officially reflected, then by all means, we can pass any motion we want. But I don't think we need a motion. Um, i- it's just a request to, you know, to to bring that back at an appropriate time. Would, would anyone like to, yeah, Andrea?
The inappropriate time would be at least after we have uh two more staff members on our team. I started that budget conversation saying that we are, we're maxed.
Yeah.
Our small group of people right now, we're we can't do any, anything new. And it's, it's, it's something that we, it's all been on our list for a long time. It's important. It's important to us. It's important to you. Um, but i- it, we won't be able to do it for October.
Oh, yeah, not for October. No, 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 no. Whenever it's reasonable, it would be great to come back, but I don't think officially we need a motion for it in answer to Paul's question.
Yeah.
Next year.
Next year.
Next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. People figure out how you can do it. Yeah.
Great. Um, anything further? And Andrea, if not, are you satisfied with what you've heard to be able to go to your next phase?
Yes, thank you very much for your, your feedback.
Nothing further from any member of the board? All right. In which case, I have a motion, uh, I do not have a motion. No, there's no motion attached to this uh item because it was a discussion only. That's right. Um, so next on our list municipal update roundtable. And I'll start because I'm easy. Algonquin Highlands, we are moving towards our Dorset opening. Hurrah. Um, any other members of the, of county council wish to offer an update from the municipal side?
I can't think of anything. We did the exact same thing as um you did up in Algonquin Highlands and we had our staff, our couple of senior staff members, and we toured around the Minden Hills, but we have several, and it's a, it's several buildings and things. So the library wasn't the one that got looked at this time, but it will be on our list for next time. So.
Right. Or to that. Hmm. Walt, anything from your end at all?
No, right now.
No? Okay. Um, then our next meeting date um is set for October the ninth, twenty twenty four at four P M. Um, any other words, comments, questions before we adjourn? Right. In which case, may I have a mover and a seconder to adjourn?
I'll move.
Adele and seconder?
Lisa, I think.
And Lisa. Be it resolved that the September eleventh, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of the Halliburton County Library Board now adjourned. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.